This meeting, this is we're calling the regular city council meeting for July 7th to order. Maybe have at 4:00 PM, maybe it's a study session, maybe have the roll call, please, Anthony.
Yes, you may. Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lampres.
I'm here.
And Mayor Lewis.
There, nice to meet everyone.
And we also have some of our park and rec members, so I mean, there we go, we have Chairman Alex Key.
Here.
And we have newly appointed member Taylor Henkel.
Here.
And we have Julie Robertson. And I don't know if I've missed anyone else.
No, you've got everyone that I can see.
As other members join, I'll announce them.
Great, great. Welcome, everyone. So at this time, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a public comment, and this is a public comments that are for any item on this special meeting. Is, oh, and Mary Lou is getting waiting in the waiting room, okay? And Tim, we just had the roll call and we're calling for any public comments. And if you wanted to make a public, now would be the time to do it. Okay?
They'd like to make a public comment.
Did you say they do?
I know, I don't see anyone who'd like to make a public comment. Just a quick note for anybody who's on the call, that's a member of the public and doesn't know how to use it. If you're joining via link, you would click participants at the bottom toolbar, raise your hand. If by phone, you can dial star nine or raise your hand.
Okay. Good. All right. So the next item, the item number three is the report out of closed session by our city attorney Mona Ebuhami.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The council did meet in closed session on Chan versus Town of Atherton, which is existing litigation. The town provided direction to me.
Thank you. Going on to item number four, which is the ratification of the city manager's application to Caltrans for a temporary lane closure on El Camino Real. And I'll turn that over to our public, oh, to George first for a summary.
Yeah, I'll just do a little brief intro. Timing of this is that we haven't yet submitted the application because we've been waiting on Caltrans's response to the city attorney's most current communication with the district director. So we submitted a formal letter, as the council's aware, that's as part of the staff report, asking that Caltrans take responsibility for that section of the roadway to provide, you know, encroachment barricades to allow the public to walk along that area in a more safe manner. Their initial response back to the town was, you know, that's, that's great and all, but you guys have also been coming to us about pursuing an encroachment permit. We think that's probably a better idea. Why don't you guys apply for that, basically? It's a summary of their brief letter. So the city attorney responded back and Mona can interject as well. Hey, we really want you guys to do it, Caltrans. It's your section of the roadway. We feel you're responsible for it. That was the council's direction. So, but as part of the belt and suspenders approach, we have been behind the scenes putting together the elements of the encroachment permit application. So just in case we need to submit that. This item this evening is a ratification of that application as we continue to move forward. So with this item, you can, you can talk, discuss the item if you wish. Provide some additional direction to staff. At present, though, we're kind of waiting on the district director's return response to the city attorney's most recent email.
So do you know when the, oh, his, his return, the district directors, he's out of town, did you say?
She, she was out of town. I believe she may be returning tomorrow. We were hoping for maybe a response today, but I expect something tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Any member of the council have a crush, question for George about this issue, kind of clarifying better understanding of what we're looking at right now?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, just, George, do we have any update on how long we expect
Sorry, what?
There to be no pathway?
That's probably around mid to late September.
Mid to late September or?
September.
September. So all of July, all of August, and potentially all of September.
Potentially. Unfortunately, there's just no way to gauge that. I mean, we're pushing the contractor as much as we can. And but until they feel that there is somewhat of a safe passage through there, for which we would take the liability and kind of identify them as the fastest way to do that. But that's still based on their construction timeline into September sometime.
Okay.
We just don't have an incorrect date.
Any follow up, Mike?
No, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other council member have a question? Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So the position that we have taken with Caltrans, which sounds like it's been led by our city attorney, has been that this is their responsibility to provide a safe route for people to travel. That they currently don't have a safe route. They're essentially locked onto Ashfield, I suppose unless they drive or take the risk to walk El Camino. And that we think it's their responsibility to make El Camino safe. Which is a position that I strongly support. I think that is the right thing and that that's what we should pursue initially. And but I just want to clarify that that has, that's the essence of the position that we've taken to date with them.
That is largely the, a great summary of our position. The temporary pathway between, that was connecting Ashfield and Maple was a privilege that was offered residents. It was never a permanent pedestrian pathway. The permanent pedestrian pathway was El Camino Real. We knew that with the work done at the civic center and the closure of that temporary pathway, that there would be additional pedestrians accessing ECR. And therefore, because that facility is owned by Caltrans, they are the ones that have the fiduciary obligation to provide that safe access to pedestrians. And so while this item is before your approval today, it's really, as the city manager has said, a belt and suspenders approach to ensure that something is being done in the event that Caltrans does not unilaterally and timely move ahead.
Councilmember Widmer, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so how, how quickly? Or what's the drop dead date that we really need to move to get the couple barriers from the fire district as well as any other ones that we need? What, yeah, how fast can we do that? Because once we submit this thing, obviously, they're not going to process to do this at their cost. They're just going to leave it at our cost. So just as the question is, you know, do we really need to do it right now? Or is it the end of the month? Or when is?
But from my perspective, it really depends on when Cal, when we hear back from Caltrans. If we hear back from, from Caltrans before this week, then, and their answer is no, then we would call together that application and submit it to Caltrans. And I suspect, Robert, Obadia, correct me if I'm wrong here, that they are prepared to approve option four, which is using concrete barricades along that section of the roadway relatively timely.
Yeah, they've given us that direction. They are still going to have to go through their internal process, but folks have already been in, we've already been in contact with folks, so we anticipate a hopeful, and I'm gonna say, coupled with the letters that were going to the director's office, I'm anticipating that we will get a quicker turnaround than we would otherwise get.
So, so are you planning on just, once, if we give you approval today, are you planning on sending the application in tomorrow?
No, we would, we would still wait for Caltrans's final response to the attorney's most recent communication.
Okay. Okay, all right. And then, but there's got to be a drop dead date. If they continue to stall, then we're going to have to do something. Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, so that's our question. I'm going to open it up for the public to ask any questions at this time about to us about this issue. Any member of the public, Anthony?
And I don't see anybody with a hand, but if I could just mention that if you're a member of the public joining by Zoom link, you can click participants at the bottom and raise your hand. Or if you're joining by phone, you can dial star nine and raise your hand. So if you have a comment on this item, we welcome you to do that now, but I don't see anyone.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and direction. And Diana, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. And so I guess I'm frustrated. I feel that, you know, we're going down this first application pathway to get the encroachment finished off and waiting now for Caltrains, Caltrans to respond to us. We don't know how long they're on to us before we move position of closing that section of the road. And it seems to me that we just go to our end result because that's what we're thinking, we're going to get to anyway. We should be doing that right away. Because I think that the residents, you know, would like to have something resolved sooner rather than later. Am I wrong in thinking that way? You know, I understand that the, the thought process, you know, do this and see if they respond and they, you know, do what we think that they need to do for the encroachment permit, but access. Because it's their responsibility. I don't think that they're gonna jump through that hoop and make that happen in a timely manner. Anybody else want to comment on that? No? Okay. Any direction? Rick, you want to talk about what kind of direction we want to give to the city manager?
I think that what we're doing is exactly the right thing. I think we should be putting pressure on Caltrains to take responsibility to make their roadway safe. And we all know that there's a need, an increased need for residents, including children going to school and otherwise riding bikes and walking off of Ashfield. And, and there's a need for the elderly and anyone that needs to get out and walk. They're currently confined to this one block unless they are willing to walk on El Camino. And, and given that that's their only route right now, it's absolutely Caltrans responsibility to make it perfectly safe. And we're concerned about that. And I think we've properly expressed that. And if they don't respond, then I think we're prepared to move forward and and try to get them to let us respond. And it sounds like they've, they've generally been open to that possibility. I, I think we should do exactly what the city manager has proposed and continue to put the pressure on them. I thought that Mona's email or, or, or letter to them was very good. And, and I don't think we should waver in that position.
Well, I understand the process, but I think that there should be some kind of a drop dead date. If they, if they don't respond within X number of days or by, you know, at the latest, maybe the end of next week, then, then we should move to our next position.
I, I'd like to comment a little bit on that. I, I, I'd like to perhaps say that that the sending of the, of the, of the, our encroachment permit that would then initiate us doing the work and assuming the cost and the, and assuming the liability. Perhaps we should take that up at the, at the council meeting in, in two weeks. And at that time, if we haven't heard from Caltrain, despite repeated contacts that we, that we then move forward on our own. Because I, I agree with you, Mayor, that, you know, we need to not keep these people landlocked. And we need to have everything in place and time for the schools to start. And, you know, before school starts, there's athletic teams that get together and start practicing. So, so I agree, I agree with you that we should have a date, but I'm suggesting that we wait another two weeks.
Okay. Any other council member have an opinion about this?
Yeah, I have a comment, Madam Mayor, which is I'm concerned that we're looking at a window of, I think you said three months, up to approximately 12 weeks. And that the pace we're moving on might get it resolved with, you know, three weeks to spare, meaning leaving us exposed for nine weeks. And I just, I think we need to give a greater priority to speeding this along for that reason. That we, I think as a council, believe there's an issue now. And that we should be doing everything we can to expedite it to get that resolved quickly. I don't think the current plan will get it resolved very quickly. But I understand why we're pursuing it. And I guess what I would do is I agree, let's put a timeline on it. Two weeks seems like the outer barrier for me, because if, if we wait two weeks and then we put our application in and then they take two weeks to resolve it, and if we take a week to build it, you know, we're left with just a few weeks worth doing any, anybody any.
Okay. Any other council member want to summarize? Well, the direction, I, I guess the direction I would say is if we go ahead and submit this as you've got planned, but then if we aren't feeling and having good communication with Caltrans by the end of next week, that is tomorrow, Friday, and all of next week, that we ratchet it up and, and take our, our next tact so that we can move things along more rapidly. Does that sound reasonable? And you can
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. That's a good idea.
Just so I, I get it. The direction would be file on a, on a date certain unless we hear something specific from Caltrans. Is that what you're just suggesting, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That, that makes sense to me.
Rick, do you, can you, can you go along with that?
That sounds fine. I, I think it's important that they move forward. This is their responsibility. They've got to move forward. They've got a legal obligation, in my opinion, in my uneducated opinion. They have that legal obligation to move forward.
Well, you know, I concur with you. I think that we, you know, Cal, ECR is a very dangerous environment. And all, the county is really going to make some major changes all up and down. You know, through CK, but we don't have time to wait for that, for this solution. So Diana, can I get a consensus from you on that? Okay, so is that enough direction?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is that staff wait until, let's say, midday next Friday. If we have not yet heard back from Caltrans, or if before that we get a no answer from Caltrans, that we file our application.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It's, it's, it's very frustrating working with these people, I know, because they're such a big organization. But I did, you know, hear from the new director and she's very customer oriented, you know, in her CK speech to everybody. So let's hope she's had a nice vacation, Michelle. Okay, shall we move on to the next item? The next item is item number five, which is the award of contract for the event management services at Holbrook Palmer Park. And George.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This one you've seen before. As you know, it was at the last, last council meeting. It's the exact same staff report. The only change is that I believe we had two members of the council who did a tasting yesterday around 11:30. So maybe you could expound a little bit on how that went, as well as we have received a couple of additional inquiries into catering services or event management services at the park. Now that the RFP is closed, we had a couple that have reached out through various means. One of the options in the staff report is thanks, Joe, is to reject all bids. And you could reissue the RFP and see if we get more responses. The, the downside to that is kind of the bird in the hand argument. It's probably unlikely that Cater Two would reapply if we reject their bid. In my experience, that's been the case.
So I will defer to Councilmember Widmer, and then I have some comments about the visit yesterday. Would you like to summarize your experience?
Sure. First off, you know, as you know, I wasn't in favor of moving forward last time. But the mayor and I, you know, spent a couple hours with them as well as with Anthony. And, you know, they, they provided us a meal so we could taste their, their food. But they also talked about the process of how they work and where they're working. Of course, some of that was in their proposal. And so they're working in some very prestigious places. They work with a lot of great organizations. The way that they, I was impressed with the way that they said that they'd like to work with clients. So a client wants to come in and, and, and have something, and they're going to have, you know, more than 50 or 60, whatever the number is that they're going to decide on. You know, they sit down with them, they let them sample their food, but they talk to them about what their tastes are and come up with solutions that will be catered directly to them. And I think that really I was impressed with what they do. I was impressed with their staff. I was impressed with their total facility. And so, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with them. I'm sorry, these other people didn't come through. I did bring up to them about perhaps they could try or consider doing the cafe at when we start getting going over at the civic center. And they didn't, they didn't turn that down, but they, you know, they want to know a little bit more about what the traffic is so they can estimate what their business would actually be compared to what their costs would be. But they weren't, they weren't against it. They were kind of open of at least looking into it. So I like them and I'll support moving forward with the contract.
So my impression was that the facility was spotless and very, very well organized. And you know how chaotic your personal kitchen can be when you're trying to cook for a party of 10 or even five, you know? So, I mean, and the staff were just very experienced, very gracious. And the presentation of the food was lovely, creative and delicious. And it really just impressed me. But I think the, what impressed me the most was the current owner had kind of been brought up, you know, working in the organization for many years before purchasing the whole business in 2018. And he just knows all the ins and outs and ups and downs. And it just seemed like it was really a well-oiled machine. And I think that the financial, the, the arrangement is, is going to work. I just think that we'll be better off, you know, I think, I think we can make a good partnership. So that's my summary. Any other? And so I would support moving forward with the, the Cater Two as our event coordinator and cater at the town.
Mayor Lewis, can I ask a question? Did we, did we take public comment on this just yet?
No, I'm gonna, oh, right, I was gonna, right, we were supposed to do our summary report of it, I think, first, and then ask for questions. That's what, because George did his summary report. And I thought that Councilmember Widmer and I would do our summary report and then open it up to council for questions. And then we'll do public comments. Is that okay? Well, unless you want to do your report too, because you were there the whole time and you asked very good questions.
Well, thank you. I would echo what the two of you said. I personally enjoyed the, the atmosphere. I think the staff were exceptionally well-prepared to discuss their business, their plan of operation. And I personally liked how versatile their options were in terms of how they can deal with the renters. But most importantly, I think their ability to be flexible with the vision and the direction of, of the council was, was, was key. I think their understanding of what council might want, what the residents might want in terms of how they want to see the park used and managed, and an understanding of that will, will play very well for them in a long-term relationship. So I, I had a very good experience and I'm glad that I was able to join. And Robert Ovadia got to taste the dessert, and I'm telling you, he enjoyed it.
I thought you brought it home for your wife.
It wouldn't have survived. Mayor Lewis was right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have survived, not on the car ride home with me.
Yeah, no, yeah. So Councilmember Hawkins, Manuelian, you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I, the question I have is, the only issue I had at all with all of this is that they were asking for an exclusive. And by granting them exclusive, it allows them, not to say that they would do this, but it allows them to do not competitive bids, that if there was an open market, then other caters could bid against it. So Mona, is there any way we could just add some verbiage to the contract that just kind of make sure that they are stay, to give them the exclusive, make sure that they stay competitive pricing?
Why don't we do a benchmark periodically?
I think, I think that's probably the way to go is that the council could revisit the level of service and ensure that it's meeting the needs that are in the scope of work. It's difficult for us to
Lobo on the phone, the operations manager, if, if you'd like to ask him questions. They did speak briefly about how, you know, their reasons for, for that. And I don't know, Joe, you may want to address some of those.
Well, certainly, you know, our, our position is that we want to be able to be in a situation where we can better leverage ourselves to, for the cost factor, right? So us having an exclusive to that effect basically allows us to have better negotiate prices with our vendors. And that's really the strategic part of this, of this, of us asking for the exclusives. Because once we can designate a certain revenue that we can generate per year, then we can go to our vendors and say, well, listen, you know, this is what we're willing to do or we, we can generate. And so therefore, you know, can we get better prices? And I mean, that's basically the, the essential aspect of it. More so also is to also be able to provide better service, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's spotty when you're in there once, maybe once or twice a month. But if, if you can dial it in and we can be there on a consistent basis, then that allows us to provide better service overall.
George?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe we could probably, to address Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian's issue is this is a, or could be a multi-year contract. And after the first year, in order to get the second or third year, this would come back to the council and we could have it evaluated from the perspective of competitiveness and level of service at that point. Before you re-up for that second year or third year or whatever that term is.
Well, George, they asked, they asked for a year and a half because of the fact that things are already booked and they didn't book them. And so other people already have that. So I think a year is too short. I think their request of a year and a half was, is probably very appropriate.
And you could, you could put that term in there at that point, then, that they become, that there's an evaluation done for competitiveness and levels of service.
Councilmember DeGolia? Yes.
Yeah, it's not an issue I'm concerned about. That they are completely motivated to be competitive. They want business. The, the big issue with Holbrook Palmer Park is it's an awesome venue that hasn't gotten as much attention as it deserved. And we don't have the resources to do the marketing. They're motivated to do it. They want to bring people in and, and they want to be competitive. The contract, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I do believe that the staff report said that after a year, the proposed contract has a term that says that if either party wants to terminate the contract, they can give the other party a limited number of days' notice and they can terminate it. So the reality is if we think that they're being uncompetitive and that's having an adverse impact on us, we can mention that to them. And they're going to be motivated to address that. And I, I just think honestly, from a business perspective, this makes all the sense in the world. I, I'm surprised that we didn't consider it before. And, and I understand our reluctance because we don't want an uncompetitive situation where we've got a vendor that's taking advantage of people. But from everything that I've looked at, and I've looked at a lot of reviews of them, and, and, and I've looked through from everything that I've looked at, and I've looked at a lot of reviews of them and, and I've looked through a fair amount of material that the staff has provided us, I feel really confident that this is a good risk for us. And I think it could be an excellent relationship for us. Both on the economic side, because we're getting a hundred percent of the fees where previously we got fifty or forty percent of the fees. And, you know, I, I think, and, and the reviews bear it out that they've gotten all kinds of respect and accolades for having done such a good job with their catering. So I feel pretty good about it. I, I'd just as soon see how it goes. And I think if we have a problem, we can bring it up. And if they're not responsive to it, after a year, we can terminate the contract. But I honestly think they're going to be very responsive and they're not looking for a short-term relationship. They, in their previous engagements, they've succeeded because they've built long-term relationships. And that's what we want, is we want a relationship. And I think Bill's comment is very good. I think once they see that actually we're really easy to work with and this is a remarkable venue that they can expand beyond where it has been, that they'll have a much better perspective to see that there's an equal opportunity at that cafe in the park. There's so many people that are going to want to use that cafe that we need to, we need to make that happen.
Okay. So I think that we've really kind of gone beyond our comments from council and I need to open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that like, would like to speak about this issue in front of us?
Anna Janoff?
Anna Janoff.
Yes, hi. Hi, I'm Anna Janoff. I was just curious why the council would just want one preferred caterer versus two or three that will keep each one accountable. You know, just like Filoli or Hiller Museum or other, like the city of Atherton, they have multiple caterers on their list. Why does the city of, or the town of Atherton find that they only want one person versus two to three? Just, thank you for your time.
Okay. So I think we did discuss the answer to that with the comments that we were just talking about previously. So I, I think it is maybe an experiment, but I think that they do have a wide range of opportunities for flavors and venues. And there are a couple or several that are beyond the excluded from the exclusiveness that they don't do. So any other member of the public have a comment at this point?
No, I don't see any hands, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd like to bring it back to council and George has a comment.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, just to note, Park and Rec is on the meeting this evening as well. And since this isn't the park, you might specifically ask them to comment on anything they might.
Okay, you're not only members of the public, you are members of our Park and Rec Committee. So if you have any comments about this item at this time, please raise your hand and speak out. I was, would assume that you would have done that anyway, but I think they're really here for the circulation. So I'd like to call for a motion. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we let's see, award the professional services agreement for the event management services at Holbrook Palmer Park to Cater Two. According
I'd like to second that.
Any questions, George?
I do, yes. The, the Councilmember Widmer mentioned an initial term of eighteen months versus a single year.
Which is different from what the contract Right. And so that would begin now, eighteen months from July seventh or so?
Correct.
Or August first. I don't know when exactly we're thinking about starting, but so we'll amend it with the, the, the contract does not say eighteen months, it says a year. But then after that, given ninety days' notice, either party can cancel going forward or renew and extend. Okay, so I made the motion. Councilmember Widmer seconded. And do you have an amendment to that, Mr. DeGolia?
No, I just have a comment. It's totally appropriate to comment after a motion's been made.
Absolutely, yes.
I just wanted to clarify, I, I know that Anna Janoff asked a specific question about why we would prefer this. The fact is this is the only response to the RFP we got. If we had gotten multiple cater possibilities that may have been preferable, there is an economic arrangement here that's more, could be more advantageous than we've seen in the past. And it's a new experiment for us, but we actually don't really have an option other than to rebid it, which we could certainly do.
Right, right. And given
I support the motion.
Okay. So can I have a roll call vote, Anthony?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Hawkins? Councilmember Hawkins, can we get your?
I said yes, do you not?
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Todd DeGolia?
Yes.
Widmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lempres?
Hi.
And Mayor Lewis?
Hi, okay, thank you. Joe, tell your team that we're going to expect great things, okay?
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, great. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is item number seven. It's discussion and feedback on the Holbrook Palmer Park access and circulation project design. And city manager is going to take the lead on this.
Madam Mayor, I think you have the review and approval of the donor letters first.
Oh, I do. Oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, yes, of course. I'm number six. I was jumping ahead. Review and approval of the correspondence to towns, center donors and Atherton residents.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the June sixteenth meeting, the council discussed the possibility of sending a letter to donors, inviting them to increase their level of donation to their desire to be recognized on the donor wall or, which is a higher level of donation or on a donor pathway brick. It was noted that the town could send a letter out to all Atherton residents as well, advertising that this was one of the last opportunities to donate to the project and receive recognition on the wall or the path. Representatives from the subcommittee advised that Atherton now committed to providing the town with the names of the donors and would assist the town with jointly reaching out to them. However, Atherton now revealed that they would like to send a letter on their behalf to their donors, given that there were some donors who asked not to be contacted again for subsequent higher levels of donation. But times of the essence in connecting with donors. So the subcommittee reviewed and has attached to the staff report two letters. One letter is distributed to all Atherton residents advising them of the progress of the project, recognition opportunities on the pathway and the wall, and advising that now would be the opportunity to contribute. And then a second letter is more specifically addressed to the list of donors to the project. Those that contributed to Atherton Now and those that contributed directly to the town, asking them to confirm their level of donation so that we have that information, as well as how they wish to be recognized, verbiage for the brick in the wall, and ask if they wish to increase their level of contribution to be recognized at a higher level of desire. Attached are those two letters for council's review. And your staff certainly open to modifications, changes to those letters as the council may direct.
Any member of the council have a question for city manager or to the subcommittee on this? Diana?
Is the assumption that the, the donors that are on the list that are on the website will get only one letter? They're not going to get two letters, right? Will we be able to control the mailing so that they're not, because the two letters are very, very similar? And it would be really annoying, and I, Atherton Now made that point as well, for them to get two letters, basically two that say almost exactly the same thing.
Actually, they'll get three because Atherton Now is sending them a letter.
Well, is it possible for us to create just one letter then and merge all the information into one?
Well, I believe that they've already done their letters. And they were writing, as George pointed out, they were writing to the people who they thought would be open. Some people said that they, okay, fine, I'll give you a hundred dollars or I'll give you a thousand dollars, but that's all, don't come back and ask me. So they would take those names off the list. I did make it clear that we were going to send a letter to everybody in town because there were some people that brought it up at the council meeting that some people said, hey, I didn't know that we could do this. I'd like to contribute if you remember. And so that's where the idea said, let's send it across the whole town. So you know, but I, I did advise Sandy that there, what we were doing, and she didn't have a problem with it, but I agree with you, it's a little bit redundant. It'll be throwing some letters away, you know?
So I, you know, if I can just interject here, I think that there is, to kind of respond to Diana's query about, you know, can we call out names of the donors that we know of from the website and not send them the mass mailing? And certainly that can be done. I mean, certainly, obviously, we can only target the Atherton, the donors that have contributed and send them that letter. And then if the mass mailing to everybody else in the, in the town who has, haven't, hasn't, who haven't donated, then I think we can. Mona, did you want to say something? No, okay. And so Rick, go ahead. So I think we can
Yeah, I, I think Diana's comment is, is perfectly right. And, and I think what Elizabeth is saying is we can make sure that we don't send the letter that goes to all residents to also those letters that are on the previously donor list. I don't have any confidence that Atherton Now is actually going to send out a letter. They, Bill, you said that they've sent it, but they haven't sent it to me. I was on their list and I know there's others on this call that were on their list, so.
Haven't gotten it either. I, I just know that Sandy said that she was going to Tahoe, so I assumed
And, and you know, they're certainly welcome to. They can do anything they want. That's no problem. But we've waited around for a long time for them to give us the list and to be able to do this in a way that, you know, really where they work closely with us and they have proved that they're, that's not really what they're focused on. So I think this, this is exactly the right thing. I do have a question, which is, George, when you were describing it for the letter to the current donors, are you, I didn't see in the letter that we were confirming their level of donation. Certainly, we know the level of donation for the donors that donated directly to the town. But the only information I believe that we have for the donors that donated through Atherton Now is what Atherton Now may have told, I don't know where we got that information, because I think the, their list on the website just gives the names of the donors. It doesn't give the amounts.
That's correct. So at the bottom of the letter that goes out to the ones that have donated, that little tear-off bottom section, if they were to tear it off, it's just a dotted line, says my original contribution amount. And that's where we're seeking what their original donation was.
Okay, so I would confirm in the letter that we need, you know, have, just have the sentence, we need to confirm your original donation amount. Because I don't think it is clearly stated to that effect.
I'm going to interject here because I know several people who have donated and they don't know, they can't remember how much they donated at, you know, two, three years ago. But anyway, if we're going to get into the, the letters themselves, I really think putting photographs of the project is really powerful. I think the way they are interspersed in the letter is a little confusing to me. And so I don't really, you know, have to plow through the letter to get to why I'm getting this letter. And so a marketing letter has to be, you know, really clear and concise and, you know, to the point so that people know what you're asking them to do and then how they can do it and that kind of a thing. And maybe we could have the, the images and the description of the project as a two-page, you know, tack-on to a one-page letter of, you know, donating is, is what's really key. And if you want to increase, because if you want to be on the donor wall and then here are the, the brackets. And I can just see how that, these letters can be made punchier in my estimation. And clearer. Diana?
I agree with Rick and I, I really think that we should directly ask them to confirm. The reason for doing that is that I think we owe it to our residents to have some sort of checks and balance here. Because I have a few donors were shocked that there was money being withheld. And I honestly think that we need to do a little, to defend them, ask them and make sure there's a venue for us to find out if there was any things that were promised that we're not getting.
Absolutely. I mean, we don't know.
If I could, Madam Mayor, just
Mike?
I, I do have, I have, I don't have the concern, it's a question, I think, about, about this, which is I believe people, they didn't give money to us, they gave to Atherton Now. And I'm, you know, it's, I'm not sure we can, we certainly can't request or require people to tell us how much they gave someone else. One, and, and two, I think part of the reason for that was because some donors wanted to remain anonymous. And so whatever we do, I hope we protect that.
Of course.
Yeah, okay, that's all.
Of course, yes.
And by the way, Madam Mayor, I agree with your points about the letter.
You, thank you.
Yeah.
You think it could be, you know, cleaned up a little bit and clear. But I like the images and I think that that's really important to include. Rick and Diana?
So two specific comments that I had, in addition to being clear that we wanted, that we're, we're asking them to clarify what they've contributed. And we only need to know what they contributed so that they can be listed on the donor wall or the brick pathway. And if, if they don't want to provide that, they don't have to be listed. There's no requirement for people to be listed. So it's just that Atherton Now has refused to give us that information and we have to move forward. So either we ask for it or we don't include them in the recognition. That, those are the options. I think that in the last paragraph, there's the sentence, even if you do not want to augment your donation, we ask you to confirm the specific way you would like your name to be stated so that we get it right. I think that sentence should be bolded. Because I think that's very important. We need to know how people want to be listed. And
If they want to be listed, excuse me, and if they want to be listed.
Well, we can say that if you want to be listed. Yeah, I think that's fine. And then I have one other question, which is, this is, the town needs to finalize the detail for the donor wall by September third. I thought, George, when we talked about this as the subcommittee, that September third is when we need to provide that information to the vendor that's going to then put it on the plaques to go into the wall. That's going to take them maybe a month to get that done. I, I'm concerned that if we ask people to give this information by September third, that we're going to have, you know, a lot of delinquency. And while we may need it by September third, I thought that we really wanted to get it by the beginning of August. If I'm accurate about that, we need to ask them to get it to us by the beginning of August.
Okay, Councilmember Widmer?
Sure. So I told Sandy that we needed the names and the, and how much they donated by the middle of July so that we could go ahead as we, as we approve the plaque vendor, they would, we would provide the data package of what they're going to be putting on the plaques.
Right.
And so, you know, it's not the middle of, it's not the, whatever it is, the twenty-first of July. I'll be more than happy to, to call her on her cell phone up in Tahoe because she promised me she would get those.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what we discussed as the subcommittee.
Right, right.
But we know we're at the middle of July in one week. And we haven't seen them be responsive to us for more than a year.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I told her that we needed it by the, when we approved the plaque, which is Well, I, I, you know, I, I told her that we needed it by the, when we approved the plaque, which is in two weeks. At the next, at the next council meeting, which is in two weeks from today, we'll need it. And I'm more than happy to get back with her and just say, hey, you know, uh, so I'll, I'll put some pressure on her again, but she already told me she was getting the information from the brother or what, you know, somebody else who's keeping, keeping the record. She wasn't doing that. So I'll call her as soon as we're done with this meeting. Okay?
Right.
George?
Yeah. So just, uh, two points. One, uh, the, the turnaround time for modifying the letter, getting them copied before getting all of the addresses with specifics, specificity. Um, as you know, we, when we send mailings out, we send it to resident with a bulk mail postage, uh, address. So if we're talking about culling the list of addresses, so they're not just a blanket bulk mail, uh, that's going to take a little bit of time. Uh, so putting a closing window date in here of the end of July is going to be very tight if we put that into this particular letter. That's just point number one. But point number two is, I've spoken with, uh, one member of the council on this. With respect to the responses that we got for the donor wall, uh, RFP, we received two responses and I'm a little underwhelmed by both of those responses. Uh, and that item is coming to you on July 21st. Uh, so we may have to talk about alternatives to finding a vendor to do the donor wall. So there may be some more time involved.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. I, I, I just want to, I understand there is some, um, uh, editing and time to, uh, pull out the addresses of the people that are already on the list, which the only list we have is what was on the Atherton Now website. But there's only, there's only like maybe 60. It's, it's not a huge amount of.
I, I know, but when you get a, when you get the Atherton Now newsletter, there's no address on it.
No, but I have the addresses. I can give you the addresses.
Well, I, I don't know. What, what I'm saying is the letter that goes to all residents.
Groundbreaking, I wrote to every person. Okay.
I know, but the letter that goes to all residents in town doesn't have addresses on it. So we can't pull out specific addresses for the duplicate donors.
Yeah, we sent to, we sent to resident Atherton, California.
Right.
Yeah, but it's alphabetized. It's, it's.
You know, it says Atherton resident, California 94027. That's how you get your newsletter.
I'd actually like to do it differently this time if we could.
That, we, we can do a bulk mailer to every parcel addressed in town. Uh, but we don't have a list of all the donors.
Or.
Yeah, Bill's got that up there. Um, so it's just take more time. That's all I'm saying. It's just going to take more time to do it that way.
Diana?
Be aware of that.
I think we should do one of two different approaches and we're doing kind of an in-between. Like the letter that we have designed here before us for the donors that we know actually donate a lot of money is way too impersonal. So if, so in my view, we either take all the information, we do a bulk mailing and we change the wording so they could go to everybody. Or we address, we pull out for those people and we handwrite or write a very custom thing specifically to them that's signed by Elizabeth. Because if someone's donating that much money, we should, it should be a little more personal. We can't send them a second bulk mail. So either, that's, that's where I'm going with that.
I agree. I totally agree. And I just think we have to change our approach to the rest of the residents in a bulk mailing. I've, I've done the same, honestly, I have sent handwritten letters to every resident in town with handwritten addresses. Okay, it can be done, that can be done, or just even personalized, uh, labels that you stick on. So it's.
I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying it will take longer than the July turnaround that we were talking about.
Well, okay.
The, the other thing I would like to add is that I think that we should make it sound a little, so if someone's donating a lot of money, we should make it sound like they're going to get something for it. I hate to say that. So, um, and what I would suggest we do is add some wording saying that those who donate above a certain level are going to be acknowledged at the ribbon cutting, publicly acknowledged at the ridding, ribbon cutting, unless they don't want to be. Um, uh, I had asked George about the idea of offering a reception, a wine reception or even a patron dinner. He, uh, said that we can't pay for that out of public money. But maybe we can find someone to donate the money or the resources for just that. But I think that people who are donating at this level need to get some, a little more than just a dry letter.
Yeah, I think the letter needs work, uh, but it really isn't, I, I think, um, the images are really great. We just need, so who's writing the letter? Can, who can edit the letter? Who can, um, you know, have time to do that? I, I'll, I'll help.
Why don't you establish a subcommittee?
Yeah, well, I can work with.
I'd be happy to help. Or Bill and I, Bill and I could do it as that we're the donor subcommittee, so we can give you a draft.
Can you do that?
We can give George a draft and he can give it to you.
Yeah, that's how it will be.
Mike, where are you? Mike, I really wish I could see your face. Um, so, uh, so I guess we already have the donor committee who should do that, right?
Yeah, I'll send them the word versions. No problem.
And Diana?
Can you make one more comment? I, I really think, and I tried to say this before and I don't know how to say it clearly, but I think that we owe our residents some level of transparent, transparency. Because right now, the people have donated money to the city and then they withheld, the Atherton Now withheld some amount of that money. So that means somebody's money that they donated to us has been held by Atherton Now for.
They're going to give us the money, Diana.
Years, but let's, we have no checks and balances set up here. So that's why I'm in favor of asking what they've donated.
So Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the direction we're going in. I think we need to be careful that people gave the money to Atherton Now, they did not give the money to the city. And we should also remember the Atherton Now volunteers put a lot of time and effort into it. So I want to make sure that we are respectful, you know, to that, to that effort.
Absolutely.
That's all. That's all. But, but I'm, I'm pretty happy with the subcommittee, you know, uh, Rick and Bill working to sort of punch up the letter. I, I think that's a great idea.
Good. Okay. So can we close this? Uh, shall I, do I need to open it up for public comments again? I think I did all.
I think you did that already and I think, uh, we have enough direction, Madam Mayor.
Great. So then if I can move ahead to the Holbrook Palmer Park, uh, Access and Circulation Project Design, which I was very excited about to do earlier. So who's going to take the lead on that? Is that going to be?
This one is Robert, uh, along with a consultant.
Robert Ovadia?
Well, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, Member of the Council and Park and Rec Committee. Uh, we really appreciate your time this evening. Um, in your staff report, uh, you will find various attachments, including the original conceptual design for the Holbrook Palmer Park Access and Circulation Project, which was initially reviewed back in 2017. Um, earlier this year, the council approved the contract with Verde Design to take it for, from the conceptual stage and move it forward to the, um, uh, construction stage. And so what you have in your package also is the 50% drawings that have been prepared by Verde. And so I'm going to share my screen just to highlight some, uh, elements and to remind folks where, where the project has started and where we have headed. And so, uh, share it on the screen now. This is the original concept layout, um, which highlights the transition of pathways in the main entry area from asphalt, um, to, uh, decomposed granite, uh, with an additional pathway, uh, better connecting the entry point, uh, towards the playground area through the picnic area. Um, there are, um, modifications, uh, to both the entry and exit driveways, uh, primarily to provide a clear pedestrian pathway for, uh, our residents to come into the park, uh, where they currently are walking within the area where folks drive. Um, additionally, we have, um, some highlight areas where our, our pathway connectors that are highlighted with decorative paving as well as, uh, some speed table crosswalks, uh, to get people across the, um, uh, across the driveways in a safe manner to get to and from the entry and exits as well as the, the little loop, um, DG pathway on the left side of the entry driveway. So this here was the original concept drawings that we had. Um, I am now going to share, um, the 50% drawings and I do want to say that, um, the item has been brought forward to the Park and Rec Committee for comments, um, over the last few months as we have, uh, been seeking input uh, on the design so that we can, uh, move forward to construction. And so the primary comments that we received with regards to the conceptual drawing, including the desire for more trees, minimizing the amount of concrete in favor of decomposed granite, um, the selection of bricks and types of furnishings in and around the, the park and the project. Um, and so this is an opport, this is an opportunity for the council to ask questions and to have a conversation with the Park and Rec Committee with regards to the design and to provide additional feedback to staff if there are any areas of uh, specific concern or areas that we need to focus attention. And the other item is that we do have, uh, some budgetary constraints. And so we'd like to see what may be at the bottom of the priority list with regards to the design. If we need to develop, uh, some additive alternatives to keep the project closer to budget. Um, and so what I can do is I can highlight the aspects of the project, um, and then open it up for conversation, or you can go ahead and move into the conversation portion if you've had an opportunity to look at the attachments in your staff report.
Thank you, Robert. I'll, um, bring it to council for any clarifying questions to you. And then also then to the Park and Rec Committee. Diana?
Um, there was some discussion in the past about the bridge and the roadway that goes into the park and the safety loads and all of that. And the fire department was, uh, somehow involved in that. So I would just like to suggest if we haven't already that any speed bumps, I think there's a speed bump in this plan and this, uh, entry gate that we run it by the fire department and make sure that we're, you know, making them be able to have emergency access. And, and pick back up that conversation we were having with the fire, with the fire department about that.
Okay. Uh, we will be having conversations with regards to the speed tables that we have proposed for the crosswalks. We've had some initial conversations with them and they are, um, they, they don't have any particular issues. They will want to take a look at the overall design to make sure that they're easily traversable by their equipment, but at this point, we don't foresee any problems in that regard.
Is that original problem we had with the entry and the weight? I mean, George can clarify.
I was going to say that's a different issue and there was some conversations as that being a, uh, potential joint funded project, but the reconstruction of the entry and exit bridges are not part of this project.
The bridges are not part. The movement of the, uh, isn't there one hydrant being moved?
Uh, there is, uh, that's, uh, there are, I think, actually a couple. And so I'm going to try and zoom in, uh, a bit. So currently in the asphalt pathway, the hydrant pretty much will bro, block pedestrians, um, from having an accessible way to cross, cross the driveway. So the plan is basically to shift it outside of the, uh, the walkway and basically have it adjacent to the walkway on the backside. And obviously the, the relocated hydrant would be done pursuant to Cal Water and, uh, Fire District standards.
But where would it be put?
Uh, so here, this is the entry drive. So currently, if you can see my mouse, the hydrant is here.
Uh huh.
And the new hydrant basically just shifts over, um,
Okay.
A, a little bit forward and outside of the pedestrian pathway. And then similarly on the exit drive as well.
I see.
Rick, I think with budget constraints, that could be a very expensive, uh, four foot move.
Um, but it's required for accessibility.
There's no way around it?
Oh, not, not really.
Rick, go ahead.
I have a question. I, you, you, one, one of my questions deals with the budget because the staff report isn't at all clear about where we are with the budget. The staff report references that, um, the budget includes an allocation of a million 50,000. It's not, it's not, my first question is, it's not clear if that million 50,000, that, that looks like what is in our capital budget for 21, 22. Uh, and so that would make me assume that the grant funds from the Stanford mitigation grant and the Prop 68 grant are in addition to the million 50,000, but it's not clear what that aggregate dollar amount is.
No, the aggregate dollar amount in the budget is the million 50 and that includes the two grants.
Okay. So, um, Rick, I'm going to call on the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee, uh, Alex. He's had his hand up, uh, for a question comment. Alex, can you, uh, can you unmute?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I was just wondering, are the, do, uh, well, the cost estimates, we won't actually know what the real uh, cost will be till we actually see the bids. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have a current estimate based on the 50% design. It's got some contingency factors in it. Um, and currently it is a bit over budget and we're not saying that we want to drop any particular elements at this point, but just basically understand priority wise, if we were to have to shave some money off of the project by putting in some additive alternates, we would then have some flexibility at the time of award uh, to either augment the project if the bids come in high or to drop out some of those additive items.
Okay. And then is there a proposal for the entrance and exits, uh, more? I see there's a pricing for it, but I didn't actually see the, um, an actual proposal for what is being changed, kind of a rendering or something like that?
Well, in the plans, uh, like for example, on my, on my screen you have here what's happening at the entry and exit where we're putting in the concrete walkway entry to get into the park up until the, um, the focal point where the pathways intersect. There's also some work on the other side of the driveway and then some minor repaving at the entry along with, uh, in the back, there's some chain link fence, uh, that's being replaced with the more decorative fence that the Park and Rec Committee opined on, um, that brings around from, uh, crossing the, the drainage channel. Um, and so the 50% plans that are in the package kind of highlight the various aspects, um, that are included in that budgetary estimate.
Okay, I, I kind of misunderstood. I thought it was more for the gates being replaced, but as the add alternate. But it's actually the gra, the work on the ground. It's, that's what's in there. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Um, if you're talking about the additive items, yes. So we currently not in the budget are the, um, the decorative elements on the gate. You are correct.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was curious.
Water fountain.
Yeah, I was curious how the, the, that proposal was priced, um, because I, I hadn't seen an actual rendering of what the changes were in that.
Yeah, at this point, it's just budgetary, but as presented in the budget, that's the base project is over budget. So those are additive items. And there was some discussion of the potential for the Park Foundation to fund either the replacement of the entry fountain or some improvements to the entry and exit. some improvements to the entry and exit gates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the Park and Rec want to um uh ask Robert a question or have a comment about this right now? So, Robert, do you?
Diana, Mayor, I I had a question.
Yes, okay, Mike Vice Mayor.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Um, Robert, could you just explain to me the the sort of project timeline um for both the budget and the actual work? And and how you envision this playing out over time?
Okay, well, current and the budget was just approved in the approval of the capital budget. The project design right now is close to the fifty percent stage. Um, and so based on feedback that we received this evening, uh there may be some elements of the project that might be tweaked. Uh, the consultant will move forward with completing the design uh before the end of the calendar year. And concurrent with that, we're going to be going through the sequel process. And um, once that's complete, we'll be able to enter into a funding agreement with um with Santa Clara County. And we also will need to enter into a funding agreement with State Parks. And initial feedback from State Parks was that they would like to have you say, since we are using the park as collateral for our agreement with the county to fund the Bayfront Project. The feedback that we received from State Parks is that they would like us to have executed that agreement before we finalize our um the deed restriction that's required for the project. So our goal is to get those funding agreements in place before the end of the calendar year so that we can go out to bid with a project at the beginning of the year or towards the spring so that we can do construction over the summer.
And and if we stick to that schedule, when would it be complete?
Um, I can defer to Derek McKee, who is the project manager for uh Verde Design, but I believe it's anticipated that construction's about a three to four month process. Is that right, Derek?
Yeah, I think that it would be around that range.
So so does that mean October twenty twenty two, if I got that right ballpark?
Um, I think that's a reasonable goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Actually, two questions for Robert. Uh, the first one, based on what you just said, um, you know, the deed restriction uh if I if I recall is for not only the Civic Center, but then once the Civic Center is done and complete, then we would use this as collateral for the for the county. Uh, I may be mistaken on that, but that's what I I thought was the case. And so it's gonna take some time to relieve the the uh the obligations with regards to the Civic Center is gonna be a year or so from that.
No. Uh, I think it's my understanding that once uh staff is able to move into the new Civic Center, we can push to release the park from the obligation of the COP.
That's right.
And that would enable us to enter into the funding agreement with the county.
That's right. All right, then the second question is. Um, so there were a lot of things that were listed here and different dates of when they came up. Um, the question is, is there a prioritized list of these items from Park and Rec? I think that that's important that we at least see that and that they develop that. So we can go when we, once we see the budget and we start working on it and the the council can then decide, you know, we don't have enough money for this or we do have enough money to squeeze something else in. And with, you know, without a prioritized list sitting here at this meeting, I I think is kind of foolish for us because there's there's a full page, page two of twenty of this report, you know, has a long list of of multiple things to to say this is what we're gonna go do. We don't know what the prices are or the costs of each of these things are. Um, and we can start putting that in there, but it's not really applicable until we know what their what their priorities list is.
Okay, we can certainly go back to Park and Rec Committee and talk to them about recommended priorities. Um, I think that what we then would like to do is basically get through a conversation between the Council and Park and Rec Committee uh feedback on the design elements that we have and make sure that we are going in the right direction. Um, this was requested by the council as we move through the budget process to be able to look at the design layout and to provide feedback. And so this item is brought forward to uh provide you that opportunity.
Okay.
Rick, go ahead.
Uh, okay, on on that subject, I've got a couple of questions. Uh, the design calls for concrete in some areas, asphalt in some areas and DG in some areas. And uh I can't read the the material that's been provided, but is the yellow, so I've got three questions on those, just is the yellow, the DG, is the gray, the concrete and is the very dark gray new asphalt? On the image that's on our screen.
On the image on your screen, yes, I tried to, I took the information that we had from the design consultant and colorized it to make it a little easier. So the uh decomposed granite is the yellowish color. Uh, the light gray is the uh call it concrete. Uh, I did forget to highlight the um entry um sidewalk transition uh on Watkins that's on the other side of the driveway that also becomes concrete. Uh, some asphalt work at the entry driveway. Um, we have the speed table crossings that are also new concrete. Um, as well as a small piece of decomposed granite uh transition for the loop pathway to make sure that it conforms with um the crosswalk. Um, the orange color is the call it the decorative paving. Um, the feedback that we got from Park and Rec Committee was that was to be uh like a red brick mission style.
Um. Well, it was in the design from Verde Design, it was different colors than in the last one that I recall seeing.
Okay, I'm gonna say I colorized this just using Adobe. The material palettes are also attached to the staff report and I can bring that up as well if you.
No, but but let's deal with the materials first. So are uh in the other images, are there areas where there's asphalt and concrete?
Uh, yeah, so this here is near the exit drive, so we have the concrete along Watkins. Um, here's where we're gonna have some uh, what do you call it? Uh, detectable warning surfaces. We're gonna bring a concrete sidewalk along the entry drive till just past the driveway to the Gilmore House, at which point it would transition to decomposed granite uh to provide that walkway again along the exit drive. Um, and we'll provide a crossing um for pedestrians to get into the main front lawn area as well.
Okay.
And so just scrolling through um again, pathway connectors having some of that mission style brick tying into the decomposed granite pathways that are being included in the design. Uh, in a reminder that the main driveway, uh the loop driveway that comes up to the main house is being converted to a decomposed granite pathway as well.
Okay, okay, my 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 other question was kind of following up on something Alex Kay was bringing up, which was he was asking about the entry and I recall from when we when we went through this process a few years ago, there were some very detailed entry designs that had an arbor and and some other and and a gate replacement and some other items at the entry. Um, and I I am not aware that we had that level of detail here. What I I thought that.
Those are not currently part of the project scope.
Okay.
We removed them.
Wait, yeah, it this is kind of the first stage. And then if you come back and do your decorative like entrances and stuff, which I think it we did not uh approve of that, we kind of removed from the design.
Right, so.
That would be an add-on at some point.
Okay, so at at this point, the the entry is there there's some new gating at the entry that you mentioned.
Uh, just a decorative rod iron, I'm gonna call it a rod iron fence that replaces the chain link fence um that crosses uh over the bridge. So that'll be replaced with the rod iron style. Um, and if you hold on a second, I will switch my share to the material types.
Robert, you're you're making a separate sidewalk that will come into the park because right now that, you know, you kind of have to step to the street. So you're doing more than just doing fencing. You're putting in a sidewalk.
Yeah, we are. We are putting in the sidewalk and then putting the fencing behind, we're putting some fencing behind the sidewalk for safety. Obviously, to keep people um through there. And then just as a reminder uh to Park and Rec and for the um the council's pleasure, uh, this is the type of decorative fencing that was selected.
Looks good.
Okay.
And it provides us an opportunity in the future through a separate project to extend that decorative fencing along Watkins Avenue, um which was also desired as a future project. And so what we wanted to do is have uh basically the starter as this and then be able to carry the theme along Watkins in the future.
So the the decorative fencing that Caltrain put up has the like circles at the top, right?
Um, that was one of the options that was presented and you'll see that in the
I don't see it.
Next to it. Um, obviously, I mean, we can certainly switch the style. There's not really much of a cost differential. But as a reminder, Caltrain's fence is about eight feet, six to eight feet tall. We're looking at about a four foot high fence, just we don't need anything that large uh along Watkins.
Hmm.
And and does this fencing completely replace the white wooden fencing that exists currently at the entry to the park?
No, this would tie into it, so it stops as we cross the bridge.
And and so i- is the is the current Verde Design proposal to just leave the white wooden fencing as is?
Currently, that's the that's the current scope. As Indic has previously mentioned, the changes to the entry gate, arbor, et cetera, were not part of this project.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hawkins, Man Walian?
At our last meeting, there was a discussion of doing a walkthrough so we could all kind of get a better visual of what we're talking about here. Did that happen and I missed it?
Um, I don't recall a walkthrough proposed, but where's the staff is certainly available to walk any member of the council through the park or you can take the plans and walk through the park as well. Um, that's at the pleasure.
I I think what Diana's they referring to is I had said that I found it very helpful when we did a a walkabout the park with the uh Park and Rec Committee and and talked about the park and, you know, if other viewers said be happy to do it again, I think that was very helpful when we did it whenever that was several years ago now.
Yeah, because for some of us like myself, it's hard to visualize the white fence that's there and how it's gonna tie in and visualize that compared to what we're seeing on a drawing. So it would be great to be able to get a better feel for it. That's all I was suggesting and I agreed with Mike on that one.
Okay, um so what we're trying to uh achieve tonight is to um receive the report and um discuss and provide feedback to staff regarding the design. We're not approving the design at this time, correct?
That's correct. So we're just at the fifty percent stage right now and it's a good time to receive feedback in direction from the council to make sure that our work with the Park and Rec Commission Committee is going in the right direction.
Okay, so I think that uh I for one feel the same as with uh Councilmember Hawkins and Willian, that I would like to walk the property and take a look at it with the detail, landscape detail in hand and kind of envision, you know, how many linear feet of uh black fencing, four to five feet high are we talking about and how will that integrate with the look and feel of the park and and with the white picket fence and things like that? So maybe we can um since can we just, yes, George, you've got a suggestion.
I I'd suggest if you want to do that, perhaps uh Robert and Public Works Staff, Park Staff uh could walk you through in twos. Otherwise, you have to do it as a full council meeting.
Just gonna get there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And uh Diana?
We, do you guys want feedback on some of the aesthetic decisions that you're making here? So because I I have some, if anyone.
So I really I don't know. I, you know, I think we should do our little walkthrough first. And then we're not making a decision on this tonight and uh let's uh do, because we'll probably have more. And uh let's just kind of keep a list going and we can submit it um at at a later date. Is that okay?
I don't know.
Uh, I'm gonna say I'm hap- I'm happy to walk the council uh through and even the Park and Rec Committee, but I think they've already done a walk and understand the various components. Um, and we can collect feedback maybe through the city manager. You can provide it to city manager and he can provide it to to staff so that we can work to incorporate the feedback that we received.
Does any member of the Park and Rec have any uh comments about uh where we are, where you are with this uh plan? Uh, any uh accolades, criticisms, uh suggestions? Okay, Councilmember Vajagoya?
Yeah, um, two things that I think that that we should look at as we're moving forward with this. Uh, I think that um first of all, it's the biggest project we will have ever done in the park. So we need to not shortchange it. We're putting a lot into this. We should do it right. Uh, based on that, I think that we should, when when we walk through it, look at these uh bid alternatives, one being to address some of the shortcomings at the enter entry and exit. And the Park and Rec Committee has had many comments about how the entry and the exit need to be upgraded. Uh, so I think it's really important that we do those. There's also been quite a bit of discussion about the fountain, which as everyone knows hasn't been there now for a few years. And given that we're updating this area and that the fountain is central to the grass area around which we're doing all the upgrade, I think we should include the fountain. And my guess is that we have the funds to be able to do these things. We have to make sure that the the bid amounts are reasonable and and, you know, I have no judgment on most of them, but I have a lot of judgment on plants. And the bid shows that a five gallon shrub is a hundred dollars. These are shrubs I buy for twenty five dollars all the time. So and and one gallon shrubs I buy for between five and ten dollars, not twenty five dollars. So uh, so my guess is that there's some flexibility in the pricing when we get down to it. And I I want to make one other comment, which is the, I thought that one of the most interesting things that Verde Design did in the course of their design were these different entry points, as Robert called them, where you come in at the beginning of the park and and where the path crosses the um uh the roadway uh or where it intersects at the main house where you transition from the path that goes around the entry park into the uh between the event garden and the main house. into the uh, between the event garden and the main house. Each of those entry areas or whatever, you know, transition areas, they did this very interesting brick, uh, kind of a herringbone brick uh, display. And, and they had an image that had multiple colored bricks that was, I thought outstanding. Uh, right now it looks like it may just be red brick. So I think as we look through this, we should look at what they had proposed as the multicolored bricks and see which is more desirable. Uh, but personally, I thought the multicolored bricks was extremely interesting from a design perspective. I, I thought that was sort of the highlight of the entire plan.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Widmer and?
Yeah, um, Rick, I just would like to remind you that I think that the, the foundation is planning on doing something with regards to the fountain. So
Okay.
But let's go ahead and, and we can save the money for doing that. But you know, obviously Park and Rec would have approval over whatever, a- as well as the council approve over what we put forward. But there were some good designs here. So I'll make sure that, that Frank sees them.
Great.
Diana?
Um, in the almanac that reported on this, they talked about an amphitheater for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What was that? Where did they get that? And is that, I didn't see that in this.
Not part of this.
So I don't know where they got that. I don't know if anyone saw that, but the almanac.
It's in the master plan. So the two, go ahead, George.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you there. It is, it's in the Park Master Plan, uh, Councilmember Hawkins, Manwllian. There's a, a, an entire master plan for the park that talks about different areas of the park and the amphitheater was part of that.
That was, that was developed many, 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 many years ago.
Yeah, we need, we need to review that part. Totally, totally the ball seat.
Yeah, we need to review that again.
We need to review that again. Alex, do you want to make any other comment?
Yeah, I, I was looking through um, some of the uh, estimated pricing and the water fountain did strike, uh, did strike a chord with me because it was saying it's expected to cost nine, nine thousand. But the two choices that the uh, Park and Rec Committee uh, decided on were three th- three point six thousand and four point three thousand. So the estimate already is very high on that. And then I also did see that they want to replace the fountain base for thirty-three thousand. Um, which I'm not sure we need to replace the fountain base. If we don't, then that, you know, that saves about forty K right there. Um, if, if, and I, I think that if it doesn't go over budget, if, if it's just putting it in and it's you could, it's only going to be six thousand dollars to do. Whereas the estimate is sixty thousand dollars. So it's more of a comment, although I don't know if the um, we want any comments from our, our, our pricing person to, to tell us?
So um, just one comment on the, the pricing. I know that maybe we provided a little too much detail, but what we're talking about are in essence installed costs. And so when you talk about whether it's purchasing a plant that you can go down to the nursery and buy it for, you know, forty dollars, we have to pay the contractor to dig the hole, put the, you know, to go down to get it and put it in the hole. And you know, we're paying for the end product. And so it's more than just the material cost. And so if the fountain costs three thousand dollars at the yard, it's also, you know, the installation costs and, and potential plumbing and those kinds of things as well. So these are just at this point, like I said, they're budgetary estimates, they're not refined estimates yet. And as we move forward to the final design, it'll be further ref- refined and allocated towards the actual bid items that the contractors are going to be uh, bidding on.
All right. So, so I think that we've, you know, kind of uh, talked about a lot of, lot, a lot of, lot of uh, things here. But I would like to see over the next uh, couple of weeks um, that uh, council members who want to go do a site visit, uh, coordinate through George and Robert and do a walkthrough and take the plans and um, your notebook and uh, write any questions or comments that you have on that. And um, then I think that we'll be bringing this back for quick discussion at a later date. Okay? Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right.
Great.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go on to our item number eight, which is the review and discussion of the city councils' fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-four goals, worksheet and provide staff with feedback and direction. So um, George?
Let's thank you, Madam Members of the Council, and I am thoroughly impressed that we made it to this item, given everything that was on your two hour agenda tonight. Uh, this item is, uh, as you've seen it before, you had a goal session meeting with Nancy Hetrick from Management Partners. Uh, the additions to our goals were some refinement in the A through F categories and then the addition of category G, ensuring emergency preparedness. After Nancy Hetrick uh, took a stab at it based on the council feedback from the goals meeting, I took a look through it as well and then refined some of those goals based on my uh, conversations with Council prior when they brought it up at the council meeting, uh, just to, to give it some more um, uh, meat on the bones for each of the particular goals. So it's here this evening for any additional feedback and refinement from the council. Uh, and then a direction for uh, adoption moving forward. And we'll begin to incorporate these things in the long-term planning and priority setting as we go through the budgets over the next few years.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Widmer, you're gonna, you're late for your meeting.
Yes, I know. Um, so uh, on the last item, on the last page, page six of six of the goals, okay, and the emergency preparedness thing. I think that what we should do, just two comments, okay? First one is we specifically, and I realize it was, it was specifically called out purple air because we talked about purple air. But it can be any air quality. The government has an air quality system too. So you know, I don't know if we're going to dictate it has to be purple air because then gets into source. Secondly, I didn't really understand what uh, uh, bullet number two involved emergency preparedness communications around emergency involvement, response and opportunities. What does that mean?
Is that ADAPT?
Well, we uh, engage the community emergency communications. There's probably more words in that particular bullet than there needs to be. Uh, it, it's probably meant to just say increase emergency preparedness communication and response opportunities for the community.
I'm happy if you rewrite it.
Yes.
Thank you. That's my comments. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mike? Rick? Diana? Well, obviously category C is, you know, uh, create and expand. I, I just, you know, uh, we're really in the completion zone. We're, we're finished completing, uh, creating. So um, I'd say, you know, that's something that is going to be uh, done soon, hopefully. And uh, manage circulation per se, that's the bike and pad. Um, the strengthen community engagement transparency, you know, I, I hope that we can have more in-person town hall meetings, you know, throughout the, the coming year to uh, bring people together and maybe not just town hall meetings, but other kinds of uh, 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 community events. And um, I know Zoom, people like Zoom because they can uh, uh, join, but you know, it's hard to create community in big Zoom meetings. So I see that uh, you have a comment back to me?
I, I do. Um, you mentioned goal C uh, being almost complete. And I heard that other comment, I heard that from another council member as well. And I, I just wanted to mention that uh, the second part of that determining use opportunities for the town center and library complex, that was something the council thought was very important. And how we have this great, great new complex out there, the civic court and everything. How are we going to use it? What are we going to do there? Uh, who's going to um, participate in those sorts of activities? What kinds of activities can we have? I think that was a very important conversation for the council to have. So that's why that's still on there as opposed to concluding that item when the town center is done.
All right. Um, yes, Rick.
So the, th- this is the area that I had a comment on, which is, I, I, I was confused by insured development of proud centered library is informed by outreach. Uh, I, I guess I can kind of assume what that means, but it, it's really not clear. And I do think that uh, that what George just said is right, that we, we put an enormous amount into this new town center. And we focused on getting it built. I personally think that this is going to be an enormous boon for us because of our ability to retain and hire staff, which I think will become increasingly difficult in the years ahead and that this town center will tremendously help with. But that doesn't address how we're going to use the town center for the benefit of the residents. And, and the staff I think should be included in that. But from, from the resident perspective, I, I don't think we've really gone into it. And we need to have s- something here that will, you know, kind of get us to focus on that. Maybe what we need is a master plan for how we're going to use and develop the town center library complex. Uh, I think this is a big subject uh, that is appropriate as a goal and priority. I don't think it's quite addressed in the language here. But, but I do think that, you know, this is a big deal. We've put almost fifty million dollars into this thing. And we need to figure out from a strategy perspective how we want to best benefit our residents with it. And I think there's some very interesting conversations we could have around that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, I, I see um, miss, a member of the public with his hand raised. Can I go to the public right now? Everybody? Uh, Mr. Conlon, would you like to speak? And I'm going to go find my plug because my Mac is going to um, uh, go to sleep if I don't plug it in. So Greg, you've got the floor.
All right, thank you. I, I wanted to speak at the beginning of the meeting, but I, I had technical difficulties. I, I didn't get in in time to to comment then, but maybe it's more appropriate here with goals because uh, I had tried to work with George uh, on getting some uh, wires along Far Oaks uh, buried so that would be safer from a visual standpoint because uh, in my uh, intersection, when I go on to Far Oaks, it's blind intersection is two or three times I've had a very serious risk of almost getting clobbered. But uh, George suggested that I try and do something on Walsh Road instead and get that done first before we tackle Far Oaks. And George, maybe you could comment on why you felt that was appropriate.
Uh, Greg, I just mentioned that Walsh Road is uh, one way in, one way out. And so in terms of an evacuation of that particular neighborhood in the event of a disaster, that is our highest neighborhood at risk. So undergrounding the poles and the wires in the event of some sort of windstorm and fire where the power goes out or there's a fire um, should be a priority for that particular neighborhood.
And after I've spent a lot of time going up and down Walsh Road, trying to figure out the rough cost of what to do something like that and to talk to some of the neighbors. And I, you know, it's with all the problems we've had recently, I think the Florida situation is in hindsight, people should have done a lot of things they didn't do. And they knew that they should have been done. And I just think because George brought it to my attention and I had no interest in it otherwise, other than to get back to Far Oaks, but I do think that it is a serious problem. And I will meet with the Fire District Board also because I think the risk is not only burying the wires, but if you don't bury them, the, the risk of a, of a transformer uh, failure that would create a fire that could start a, a fire that George is commenting about with a one-way out uh, for about a hundred and fifty houses. And I'm sure over two or three hundred people. And there's, you know, there's some ex- emergency road exits, but I don't think anybody knows about them or enough people know about them. But I, I just think you should put it on your goals to address it. It's, you know, there's a way of doing it. But I think that there's other ways of doing it. And I, I think the uh, Fire District would want to help. Uh, I, I haven't talked to them directly, but I just can't believe that they wouldn't based on George's judgment alone. So I'm just encouraging you to do that. Now, Portola Valley, for instance, when someone buys a home in Portola Valley, they're obligated to bury all the wires on their property. Now, if you did that going forward, you know, over a hundred years, you probably have all the wires at Atherton buried. But I'm not sure that that's soon enough for the risk that George is talking about. So I would encourage you to, to do something that's more, and we're talking about probably twenty to thirty million dollars to do it. So it's not a small job. And uh, and I'd be glad to work with you and George on, on helping to get it started. But I just wanted to leave that with you and uh, encourage you to put that on your goals so that you, somebody in hindsight won't second guess you for not doing something. So with that, unless George has something to add, I'll, I'll stop.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Diana?
I just want to say that I couldn't agree with you more. This is an issue that's a pet peeve of mine. And uh, would, I would love to help research alternatives. And I agree that we should have a future plan on this. Even if we can't achieve it right away, we should have a future plan for it. And there may be state monies coming down the road, both in terms of fire prevention, but we also, there's earthquake issues too. So I, I applaud you for bringing it up. You're muted, Elizabeth.
Sorry. Um, uh, so you know, I agree. And it is something that I think we uh, should it's in our category G in a, in a big bucket of ensuring emergency preparedness. Uh, this uh, undergrounding all the electrical and transmission wires throughout town is a huge uh, job and it's uh, quite expensive. And uh, you know, how it would be paid for, um, I don't think um, having a, you know, a, a, an entire town overlay of um, of a, of a bond or something uh, is the right thing to do, but it could be divided into districts. Um, and uh, you know, because somebody's got to pay for it. But something that I think we should uh, continue to talk about. Councilmember Widmer, do you have a comment here?
Well, it's a, it's a related comment. Um, if you, as you know, that uh, Rick and I along with George were were expected to meet with some of the contractors in town about the, the wires. And you and Diana said you had a bunch of pictures, but we've never received them. Perhaps we could get them.
George?
I, I have them, Councilmember Widmer. I didn't uh,
Oh, okay. I, I retract my, my, my comment to y'all and George.
I, I was holding them for personal reasons, that's all.
Okay, yes. Well, good. Thank you very much. And those are low, there, those aren't high tension, you know, they're just ugly. And it's a very poor installation on the, you know, the vendor's part. And they have got to go back and clean up their mess. They're
I agree, I agree.
So anyway, so let's get back to the, you know, what we're talking about uh, right now. Um, we are uh, providing feedback to staff. We're not um, uh, approving this at this point. You're gonna, um, we're just giving you feedback on your summary. Is that correct? George, yes?
Uh, yes, that's correct. The feedback I've got so far is on goal number G, making uh, purple air more generic. Rewriting bullet point two, uh, expanding a little bit on how we're going to do the town center, perhaps master plan, concept, philosophy on goal C. Goal E, tweaking it a little bit to increase the terminology around in-person town hall meetings. Uh, and then uh, pleasure of the council on whether you want to mention underground utility districts uh, on goal G.
I would like to. I think it's something, you know, uh, that we should start, start working on.
And George is an expert from his prior experience on how to, to form a district and get it done. So and, and very fortunate to have him.
To, I appreciate that, Greg. Uh, but to echo that, as we've talked about before, underground utility districts are private districts. So we can certainly show leadership in terms of helping. Uh, but in terms of creating and funding, that's, that's not within the town's jurisdiction.
It's, it's within the residence jurisdiction. You have to, you know, it, it's, it's a big deal. Rick, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm coming back to item C. Uh, I think that the language that create and expand the town center library is fine, although we all acknowledge that we've actually now created it. But I think that then after the uh, dash, rather than ensure the development is informed by outreach, I, I think we should develop a master plan for the use and development of the town center library.
Where, where are you reading that, Councilmember DeGoya?
Uh, on the item that's, oh, i- is this not on the screen? I, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the staff report uh, attachment one, which states the goals.
So you're at the
I thought this is what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah, you're at the beginning. Okay, as you, as you scroll down to goal C at the bottom of page four. There's more, there's some more detail around determine use opportunities for town center and library complex.
Yeah, it's expand in the spreadsheet in her, in, in like Nancy's, um, attachment.
Okay, so that, that, yeah, that's basically what I'm addressing, but this says, complete the construction. I, I think this could probably be rewritten to update it, which was the initial comment. And, and I, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the very beginning. I mean, I think we need to think about how we want to use and develop this complex and and I, it seems to me the right way to do it is to prepare a master plan for it, right? So we can look at how, where we want it to go over the next ten years.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure a master plan is the right approach. I think that
Well, staff can work with that language. That's just a suggestion. I, we, we I know the only reason that I'm, that I'm using that language is because we did develop a master plan for the park and for drainage and and when we first designed this new civic center, a- as you well know, we, 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 we created a master plan for the design. But we're pretty much done with that master plan. It's now time to look at what the plan would be for using what we've developed.
Let's just call it a plan.
A plan.
Fine, a plan.
Good.
Capital, capital P.
A P, yeah, okay. All right. So is that enough direction at this time? You're going to kind of, uh, re, you know, kind of massage this a bit more?
I will return it to you. Yep.
Working on that. Okay.
Exactly.
Um, so, that concludes our entire agenda and, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you very much and wish you all, uh, um, happy Wednesday evening.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, all.
Bye, Alex. Bye, Commander Larson. Bye, Rick.
Bye.